Good evening to everyone. Welcome back to a new and exciting school year. We are very happy to have everyone back with us. Before we get going into the breadth of the meeting, I want to start the new year with a warm welcome to our new board members, Ann Woods and Jessica Taptinos, who were both recently sworn in to take over for the terms of Karen Richmond-Goddard and Ali Zafar. Many thanks to Karen and Ali for their volunteer service, and we welcome and are incredibly grateful to have Ann and Jessica joining us. I would also like to extend a warm welcome to our GMS, Granby Memorial High School, let's just do that instead of the abbreviation, student and junior this year Madison Shantz, who's joining us, welcome. And Sophia Brunson, who's returning once again from last year. Thank you for coming. Just real quick, we're going to be broadening the role of our student reps a little bit this year, hoping they share more of their questions and thoughts with us. We are grateful to have thoughtful students that wish to serve on the board, and we want to hear their thoughts and perspectives more openly than we have in the past. We would also like to welcome Michelle Crowley, who has stepped into the role previously held by Linda Powell. We are incredibly grateful to have you joining us and are excited to work with you. We have a lot of work ahead of us this year, and before I go into the work that we are looking forward to most, I do want to take this opportunity for our awards and recognition. First up, we have Dale Kittleson as our Staff Member of the Year, and I believe we have Mr. Christopher DeGray is going to be opening up with some words regarding Dale.
Thank you to the new board members, welcome. Look forward to a fruitful relationship with you going forward. My name is Christopher DeGray. I'm the Director of Facilities for the Granby Public Schools, and I would like this, at this time, introduce our Staff Member of the Year Dale Kittleson. But first, I'd like to say, I'm coming up on about a year since I started here, and right from the beginning, Dale was an immediate asset. He was a mentor. I remember my first day driving around the district and just asking general things, because I come from higher education. I said, "What's your snow program look like?" And he cut me off, he said, "Don't worry about it. We've got a good program. It's not broken, don't fix it, stay home." Two months later and two injured employees later, he said, "What are you doing Saturday and can you drive a Kubota?" This isn't about me, but I tried to put some thought into, in my over 20-year history of how many employees I've had as direct reports. I worked for a couple of major Massachusetts colleges and universities, and I think aggregate, it's about 350 to 400 people. And when I look back on my career and people that I've worked with, to me, it's not, it's not even a close second. Dale is the best employee, I won't even say has worked for me, worked with, I believe in partnerships. He goes about his business unassuming. When everybody's setting their alarms at 5:15 to see if there's going to be a snow day, he's been up at 2:00 AM checking the weather. Every time, 10:20 this time of year, when we get the really weird, it's hot, then it's cool. He's running around putting out little fires with HVAC. It's too cold, it's too hot. He leads his team with dignity. He goes about his business very quietly. I'm sure it's a little painful for him to be here tonight and take your recognition. In fact, when we had the convocation, we had to trick him into thinking another employee was getting it just to get him up on stage. But, but he is someone I look up to. He is someone who has a wealth of knowledge about the entire school district. I can ask him about a vendor from Pave it from eight years ago, and he knows it, and he's a true asset along with, and it shows that our other head of custodian, Juan Zabiza, came here tonight to support him, and certainly that speaks to the type of person that Dale is. I'd like to invite Dale up to say a couple of words, but really, this, he is a true asset to this entire district, and I can't speak highly enough of him.
I just want to thank everybody for this honor, just the honor to get this award. I worked really hard at it, and I enjoy doing it. I really do enjoy being here in Granby. I've been here for 20 years, and I've been with the school district for 13. I wish it was more, but again, I just want to thank everybody involved. Really, thank you very much.
And Chris, thank you for the kind words. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Well deserved.
A small gift for you and a certificate. Hang it up somewhere, but we're going to force you to do a photo as well. Come on over, Chris will be in the photo as well.
I had the pleasure of attending convocation this year, and all of our maintenance staff was welcome to join the stage. You're running out, I know, but it was, it was, it was the longest standing ovation. It went on for several minutes. It was really amazing. So I'm so grateful we were able to show our support for the entire staff and especially Dale.
Thank you.
I think next up, we have someone else to introduce.
We do, so we have someone special with us. I mean, it's not every day you start a new job and you get recognized under the awards and recognition title at your new place of employment. But I'd like to introduce Mrs. Kim Loveland, who will be Kimberly Loveland, I had a little tongue twister there, who is joining us as our new Kelly Lane principal. We are thrilled to have Kim here with us. She started officially yesterday, and we are so blessed to have you overlap a bit with Mrs. Baba, who is moving on to another district to be an Assistant Superintendent. So she's growing in her profession, and we're very proud of her. And as you said today in front of the staff, it's just been so wonderful to have you be able to have this opportunity to get to know the students. And we had a number of families and children attend a little popsicle with the principals this afternoon as well. Kim comes to us from Plymouth, Connecticut, and she has over 10 years of administrative experience in pre-K5 schools in both Manchester and Plymouth. I believe you were a math supervisor at one time, and you started as a high school math instructor, which, talk about the gamut, right? From high school math to pre-K2. Throughout Kim's career, she's successfully launched programs aligned to the science of reading, so she's right at home in a K2 environment and is absolutely fitting right in over at Kelly Lane. Kim, we're happy to have you here, and if you just wanted to say a quick hello.
Yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity. I know that these are big shoes to fill. Ms. Baba is amazing, and I've had the wonderful opportunity to meet all of the students so far, and they're super curious, and they're so excited, so it's so inspiring to be there with them and working with the staff already. Highly knowledgeable, highly collaborative, super dedicated to the kids, so I'm very honored to be able to lead that group. And then the families today that I met were so warm, so welcoming. It's been such a wonderful transition, working with Ms. Baba, and then meeting everybody and having this opportunity to kind of settle in a little bit. So I'm very, very grateful, and thank you for trusting me with the growth and development of the students, of the staff, and I look forward to an exciting year for sure.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you so much. We are so happy to have you. One of the best things to do is to go visit Kelly Lane. It is absolutely, it is so magical and fun over there. So welcome, and I hope you enjoy it as much as the rest of us do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
All right, moving along to the Chairperson's report. As I was mentioning before, we have a lot of work ahead of us this year, and I just want to mention one thing that is at the forefront of our minds, and that's always ensuring the safety of our students and our staff. The district works extraordinarily hard to focus and ensure the safety of every person in our schools. With that being said, we are thrilled this year to welcome SRO DeFrain into our buildings to help us on that mission. I had the privilege of seeing him in action on the very first day, and it was, it was really kind of magical to watch, especially with the Kelly Lane kids. I mean, he had every single kid approaching and fist bumping, you know, him along the way. It was, he's a warm, approachable, but also has a presence that, you know, he's a person who has authority. So I think it's everything that we were hoping for in an SRO, and it was really great to see him in action and see him so excited to embrace the role. In fact, I think he flew back from like a midnight flight from Aruba on vacation with his family to make it in time, and then he got stranded in Baltimore and had to rent a car or something to make it in time.
He drove through the night.
He drove through the night. So he is very excited to be a part of the team, and we're really excited to have him with us. Some other things that we have to focus on this year. It is time for the board to set a new strategic plan, something I know that many of us up here have been wanting to do. The last strategic plan was drafted during a very different time, pandemic. We are hopefully never going to experience that again, so we're looking forward to establishing a new strategic goal. We're also going to be establishing some new curriculum review processes and working, as always, on our communication and increased transparency. And we're going to be focusing, and you're going to be hearing a lot about, on improving our buildings and educational infrastructure. Many improvements have been deferred for a while, and we have to work on ensuring the educational environments for our students and making sure they are up to the current standards. So with all that being said, and not wasting any more time, we are excited to begin this year and get started on all the work ahead of us. All right, next up, we have public comment. Granby community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed and encouraged. As is our custom, the board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share their comments and concerns with the board, and board members will not be responding to comments or engaging in a dialogue. As it deems appropriate, the board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name and address. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, personal attacks, or vulgarity. Lastly, we note that the superintendent is responsible for student and personnel matters. No speaker will be permitted to use public comment to bring complaints against any teacher, student, or staff member or to discuss student matters, which are confidential. Therefore, the use of student, teacher, or staff names is not permitted. Any such complaints or concerns should be directed to the superintendent and her team. All right, do we have any, anyone present who'd like to make public comment?
We did put out a sign up, and I don't think anyone did, Michelle, but is there anyone that wishes to come forward? Okay.
And I forgot to add my usual addendum. You know, I'm getting back into the swing of things here. And if you are on Zoom and you wish to make public comment, please be sure to raise your hand so we make sure we don't miss you and you're in the queue. All right, so go on once for anyone in the room? Go on twice? Go on three times? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make public comment? Go on once? Go on twice? All right, thank you. We're going to be moving along to our student representative reports, where we have Ms. Sophia Brunson and Ms. Madison Shantz. It should be able to pick you up. If we can't hear you, we'll let you know.
Hi, I'm Madison Shantz. I'll be presenting the current events area. As we were just adjusting back into the school year, the current events area, although concise showcases the start for a positive school year. Beginning on August 25th, the class of 2029 or incoming freshmen experienced orientation. Throughout the first week, and after having many conversations with our freshman class, they seem to have adjusted well, both circumstantially and academically. Additionally, our first few days were filled with hour-long advisory periods in the high school, which gave us a look at the new charter. This charter explicitly states school-wide norms to create a connected feeling among our student body. This connection is defined through safe, valued, and supported three pillars that we continue to work and grow to create a better environment. With the second week just picking up, everyone has also settled into their school-wide schedules and routines, and helps with the beginning shortly with Mala U.N., Deca, and Teterpulcher Club party starting for first team dates for next week. Additionally, from hearing concerns from the junior class, and personally, the schedule has been an adjustment, but also a positive adjustment. Although it is hard to mix your class, teachers have been very lenient with the three-minute passing periods and understanding if you're coming from halfway across the school, it really is okay to relate to your class. So overall, that's very positive, which would be unexpected coming from the schedule changes, but it's pretty good so far.
That's great. Does anybody have any questions from Madison in regard to this, particularly the schedule change? I mean, that's, I'm really happy to hear that.
Can I ask about the new charter? How did that, so safe, valued, and supported, how did the new charter get established?
I'm not quite sure. From our advisors, it was taught as we need more connection among all of our students to connect all their grades so we're not as separated. This was done, we did a bunch of exercises and activities and circles to draw our connectedness within our classes, and we got closer with each other. That was only two hour-long periods, so we didn't get much done, but it's going to begin this week and I believe next week as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and for the sports, so as the new school year begins, the excitement of fall sports has returned to campus. During the first week or two of the season, teams across football, soccer, field hockey, cross-country, and volleyball have been working hard to set the tone for the year and the season ahead. Throughout August, our fall sports teams have been working hard in preparation for their upcoming games with football, girls, and boys soccer competing this upcoming week. Field hockey and volleyball will begin their games next week. All things considered, the first few weeks of the fall sports have been a time of excitement, diligence, and school pride. Athletes are getting used to their routines, striking a balance between practice and schoolwork, and proudly representing GMHS. The excitement around the season indicates that there will be many unforgettable moments to come in the season, even with more games and more meets to come.
Excellent. Yeah. Any questions from the board? Yeah, of course.
I want to thank both Maddie and Sophia for meeting with me over the summer, you know, just before school started. We really want to welcome questions from the board. The students are going to be vulnerable this year a bit to answer questions and provide their individual experiences and insights, because Chairperson Logan asked that we really, you know, engage with our students, and since connection is an important part of what we're doing here in this school district, and we have the opportunity to have two student voices, I asked both of them to, you know, come prepared with their own opinions and insights. Certainly, representing the student body is an important responsibility, and we know that there's always varied perspectives, but I'm really happy that they're up for the challenge. And so you will certainly have some things reminiscent from last year when there's a big game or activity. However, you will notice that we're starting to engage in a little bit more depth, and so if we want to know some scores, we might have to look them up, but Sophia and Maddie will definitely be ready to share. We wanted to just broaden some of the perspectives that they're able. So we're super interested to hear from board members. If there are things that you wish to know more about from the student perspective, the three of us are on a shared Google along with Mr. Dunn. And if you have questions, you can share them with me, and I will pass them along directly to the students so that they can be thoughtful in what they share with you the following week. So just trying to make that a little bit more robust. And some of the feedback that I heard, too, was the challenges with their rigorous courses and scheduling. And so Chairperson Logan and I discussed a change in seat so that when they're rushing it from a game or when they have finals to study for, they can more easily excuse themselves from some of our meetings that go a bit longer. So thank you for being here. I'm so excited to hear your perspectives this year.
And one of the other things we did offer as well, that if there's an issue coming up at the school, something that we should know about, to let us know, that it should be an agenda item. It's something that we can add to the agenda and have a more thorough discussion on. So I really, just like Superintendent Burke just said, I really appreciate your voices and your willingness to stand up and stand up. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right, next up, we have reports and discussion. We are welcoming Mr. Christopher DeGray back up to the podium.
Thank you again. This is an exciting presentation. When we, when we last left off, we talked about all the great work that we had coming forward during the course of the summer, and now we'd like to talk about some of our accomplishments. Usually, when I come and speak at board meetings, it's to tell you what's broke and how much it's going to cost to fix. Tonight is not one of those evenings. We have a lot of great news to share, and I'd like to share some of the great work that the department did this, this year. Great team. They worked really hard. They moved everybody from second shift to first shift. They were all up at 4:00 AM and it worked at 5:00, 5:30 every day during the summer because the buildings get so hot, and they did an amazing job. They really did. They impressed me more than Cruz. I was at a state college/university with 145 employees, and these guys could run circles around them. They impressed me very, very much, and we were ready for the semester about 10 days early, which I've never seen in my career before. So I think this is a great kind of picture to exemplify what Granby is about, what facility is about, what the Board of Education is about. If you've had a chance to see some of our grounds that look astounding, and when I look at this picture, I, two things come to mind. Loyalty comes to mind. That gentleman there, Jeff, he is a 1985 graduate of the school system, and he's been with us 11 years. And where we're at with this situation with our grounds is we kind of have some carpenters, some HVAC, some electrician guys, and they're kind of grounds by committee. So when we, when we put in the plus-one last year to have a grounds person, and there were other priorities which we understood and supported, I went back to my guys, and instead of saying, "Okay, well, we'll do what we can, when we can," they approached me and asked if Jeff could take over all of the grounds full-time. No raise, no change in title. He just said, "I love working here. I want these schools to look like they did when I was here." And he worked the entire summer, and it really speaks to the culture that I, that I've experienced in my year here. And he's worked so hard. He was out every day, rain and shine. Towards the end of August, I had to force him to take some days off, but he's just so happy, and the buildings look great, and they're getting the care and attention that they want. And it really speaks to my staff and to, I think, Nikki and Jen and Sheri and the culture that they create, that our people step up, and everyone is next man up. So that speaks a lot to the whole district. Next. Couple of quick repairs we're going to go through over at Wells Road, just the tank cover. You can see on the right, it's a black new one. The one before it was broken. Nothing wrong with the oil tanks, but it was settling in, and we couldn't get any deliveries in that area. It was very hard to get any type of big trucks and deliveries, so we had a company come out and just, as you can see there, take everything out, put a new one in, and we'll be, next phase, be working on our conversion for Wells and Kelly probably next spring. We took the opportunity to paint the lines in our entire district. They were getting faded for the first time in any time that Dale or any of my supervisors could remember. And while we're not at a point where we have to worry about the condition of our, of our roads and our parking lots, there were some areas of concern that were crumbling, and we're going to be an issue from the winter, so we had companies coming to take care of those, and we should be good for a while on our parking lots. So as we continue to move forward with trying to get to a resolution with our turf field, for those who aren't aware, we have some sinkholes that are forming, and we had had performed, before I was here in 2022, several test boring sites to see what was causing it underground or what gaps were there. We decided to do a more extensive testing of the entire track. Over 30 bore holes were done over the course of the summer. We've gotten results, and that we'll be putting together packets with CPAC and further information on. I think, really briefly, if it's great news, good news, really bad news, we're in the good news category. It's, it's not as deep as we think, and there's some work, and I think it will be within some of the budgetary expectations, and we'll have ongoing conversations and make the board aware of those as we get more information.
Thank you for saying that now, because my shoulders are starting to tense up as you're talking about it.
No, long and short of it, they think that there's possibilities for elsewhere in the field, but where we're having the sinkholes, it's 10 feet down. Everywhere else, they think we'd be safe excavating 5 feet down, which is a world of difference in the moving equipment they would have to use. And I had a meeting this afternoon with a turf field consultant who came out, and we're kind of putting a plan of attack together and some figures, so I'll have more information down there.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide. So this is just an estimate, but talking to my people, I believe we moved over 8,000 individual pieces of furniture this summer.
I believe it.
If you see the middle picture of what's involved in stripping the floor, everything absolutely comes off the floor. Everything goes in the hallways in every school. It has to be stripped. They've got four-inch scraper blades. It's almost like gummy glue they're taking off before they can really scrub the floor and wax it, and they did it to every room. So moving back and forth, it's really over 16,000 pieces of furniture on top of all the new furniture that came into the district, teachers that were moving, and these folks just came in and did a stellar job every day. I'm personally very proud of them. We were able with, with funds and availability to add a backstop fence over at Wells Road that runs from the road all the way over to the baseball diamond. And this was just more caution area. A lot of the kids kick balls into the woods, neighbors' areas. I'm sure from a teacher's standpoint of being able to watch the kids, it's easy for them to kind of get away. This was installed in a couple of days, and it's a great addition, and the aesthetics look great. We also upgraded all the playground mulch at all of our facilities, so they're, they're in really good shape. Central office roof replacement, that was one of the, it was the only building that was missed in the hailstorm several years ago, and we had started experiencing some leaks internally. And luckily, we found a great vendor as a partner who was able to fit it in at about half of what we thought it would cost and fit it in, in probably less than a week over the summer. And they did a great job, and also threw in gutter guards, which was one of the reasons we were having heaves and water backing up into the building. So we should be good for quite a while with that building. So now I'd like to talk about some project savings. So obviously, when we were looking at budgets at the end of the year and our wish list of what we'd like to do, what we wish we could do, there's always priorities of we need to do this. Usually, if it's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, but there are also things that are, some of them are aesthetics, some of them will help programs, which we certainly want to do to support. And I have such a great staff. We were able to perform several of these projects internally at a great amount of savings for the district. So the athletic director, Carl Gates, came to me and said, most people haven't been in the boys' locker room at the high school. Very small, very hard to get around. Then when you put 50 to 60 football players in there, there's helmets and pads everywhere. And he asked, at the very least, if we had a way to install helmets somehow. We got some quotes, they seemed a little high. We said, "Let's take some of our CMU walls, let's tap con some, some three-quarter inch plywood into it, let's paint them, let's get some hooks." And we were able internally do that. I think we have some pictures on the next slide. So that's kind of the process. We did the three walls, and we have capacity to hang 60 helmets. They only needed about 55, and they're so sturdy. Somebody unnamed on my team was able to do pull-ups on them. But they're going to be able to use them for lacrosse, baseball, bags, things like that. And it was just more of a safety issue, and it certainly frees them up. We also took an area of a shower area that's no longer used, and we caged it off with a partner vendor of ours who did Wells Road. And now they have a coaches area, and they have an area to lock up some of their game plans and some of their coaches' materials as well for when the coaches have to be in there with the students as well. the students as well. So that was a great addition. So one of the first things I was asked by Jen about a month into the job was, can we do anything about our gazebo at Wells Road? It was rotted. The entire base of the ramp was rotted. So anyone with any ADA issues could not get up. But the first three or four planks were completely disintegrated. It was an old shaker roof and you could look up on any given day and it was just raining everywhere. The benches were in disarray. There weren't a lot of people that were available. The one that, vendor was available, wanted almost $20,000 to do it. And it was, we'll get to it when we can. And hopefully by the end of the summer. So we looked at it and we decided to make this an internal project as well. And if we can go to the next picture, I'll explain to you. Next slide. It now has a brand-new roof, brand-new ramp. The ramp and the floor inside is trex-decking. All the railings have been replaced. Most of the frame has been replaced and it's been painted and metal guards were put inside to prevent birds from nesting. We had quite a bit of an issue with bird nesting and droppings and, and things like that. So all the benches are new and we also painted all the benches in the courtyard. And we're supporting the program where they're going to be adding some balance beams and some sensory things out there. And we've seen some, some staff taking their breaks and hopefully after a long period of not being able to be used, they'll get many, many years of use out of it. So we had a old kind of home ec room, room 1215, over in the high school. And because we had the new culinary space, there wasn't a need. So imagine just a room probably about the size of this room. And in all four corners was a full kitchen setup. There was a sink, full sets of cabinets, dishwasher, microwave, oven, everything. That area wasn't as needed as much. They only needed one of the sections. So what we talked about was kind of doing a renovation. It needed some new flooring. There was a big cumbersome island in the middle. But also being partners with the robotics program, they needed some space. So we let them have a little space, which grew into some more space, which grew into some more space, which grew into half of the room. So we, we needed to find room for them and we, we found a partner in a classroom across the way. But we also wanted to create program space that was useful for the special education and other needs. Again, we had some very large quotes and it was, we'll get to it when we can. Hopefully by the end of the summer. We really needed this work to be done. We were giving everybody deadlines of August 15th. So we'd have a couple of weeks, like in this case, it needed new flooring. We were going to have to wax it. We were going to have to paint walls, things like that. When, when we didn't have a high confidence level for the vendor's ability to do it and we looked at what would actually cost us in-house, we tore the room apart ourselves and we did it ourselves. We could go to the next slide. So on the left is what it was before with all of the robotics and again, the four kitchen setups. Pretty much around the entire wall, six feet up, we cut out the entire wall, dropped down the electric because it was cabinet height, capped off all the plumbing, new ceiling tiles, new floor, painted all the walls, brand-new furniture. And they still have in the back left corner, one full kitchen setup and washer dryer for use. And we were able to complete this project in under $1,000 in costs.
He says "we." I, I wasn't holding a hammer or a paintbrush if there were any of us in this room, but that is tremendous. The spaces are really, really loved.
So those, those three projects alone were a savings of over $37,000.
And how many bee stings did you acquire while you were doing the gazebo?
Six the first day, four the second day. There were seven hornets' nests under the floorboards. They're all gone.
You should add that. You like to the cost?
Personal cost.
Right.
Yeah. And, and it really was, and, and I, I did a little bit of fieldwork. And it's because I had the confidence in my people and the skillset and they were just such amazing employees that I could step away for hours at a time to work on projects and know everything else was getting done. And it's because of people like Dale, people like Juan, and the leadership that Nikki and Jen had shared, providing the resources they provided, that we're able to accomplish all this.
I just went out there to tell them to go home. It was my only job this summer. So we're talking about savings and I just want to underscore that this is potential savings. These projects were not budgeted for and now we have $37,000 left over. These are projects out of necessity had to be done. But when we went out to quotes, they were cost prohibitive. We would, we would not have been able to have done the gazebo twofold because of the cost and because of the time commitment and not available. The room that was the culinary space, we have a beautiful new culinary space. It's a part of the building projects oversight with the high school renovation, the roof and the cafeteria. But it left behind that remnant of a space and we really wanted to make that work for our PAVE program, which is our life skills program at the high school. Existing special education program without a home that matches the curriculum and the skills. And because of the expertise of our team led by Chris and an awful lot of labor by Chris, we were able to do that for less than $1,000. We wouldn't have been able to have done it otherwise because the cost was prohibitive. So I just want to underscore that these are projects that would not have been done and were not budgeted for. But because of the creativity and the manpower behind it, we were able to accomplish them at a significantly reduced cost. And when I tell you that the staff came to work, just the pride that you feel when your space is elevated is tremendous. I was in the, the old culinary space, our new PAVE program space with the kids and the teacher a few days ago and they were like, check this out. This is so cool. You know, they really were having a great experience in that space. So kids will be more engaged and they'll be better able to achieve their goals because of that. So Chris, thank you. I cannot thank you enough for your leadership and, and your individual work on these projects. It's, it's really immeasurable what you've been able to do.
Yeah, I stopped by one day during the summer and he was covered in sweat and paint. And he was like, I gotta go. I gotta go back to the middle. Like he was still going. It was like 5:00 in the evening. So, so thank you for all, all the dedication and hard work. You know, the, the standing ovation was well, well deserved. And does anybody have any questions for Chris in regard to all of, all of the things he did this summer?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. It's massive.
Okay. Next up, we have the summer programming report with Jen Miller and Kate Busby.
So Jen and Katie act as our co-directors of the summer programming and they're going to share with you the majority and I'll chime in on a few slides.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jen Miller and I'm Special Education Department Chair at the elementary level. It's nice to see you all. I just have to pause and just say thank you to who, Chris, because I have to tell you, our ESY programming would not have been as successful as it was without the help of our custodial staff and maintenance team because our buildings were clean, they were ready to go. So I don't know how they squeezed that in with all the other projects that happened, but good job. So yes, so we run the summer programming here in Granby and I work in tandem with Katie. I know those of you who've been with us for quite some time on the board, you've seen our faces. So I know it's your favorite night of the evening, I mean, of the year to see us. So we, we provide the programming for students who either have it assigned to them through their individually, individual education plan, or it's a choice of enrichment, which Katie will talk about next. So if you want to go to the next slide. So are, there's a lot of different skillsets that our teachers and our staff provide our students. And primary concern obviously is always our academic skills, being able to provide instruction based on a student's goals and objectives as they are aligned to their IEPs. And then certainly, you know, case managers provide the materials for teachers to support the students throughout their programming. And this year, our teachers did an excellent job of just grouping students based on their needs and providing that direct instruction so that they could ensure that they retain their skills over the course of the summer. Throughout the course of the schedule, OT, PT, and speech also pushed in for those services or pulled the students for those, so that they could provide those services as needed. We had 82 students that participated across K through 12 that doesn't include, include our preschool programming. That's on the next slide. And so we had 10 students in our preschool program. And again, our special education population primarily was supported through this program, OT, PT, and speech. Also, our related services provided that support. And I will tell you, this is probably, if you thought Kelly Lane was magical, this is probably my favorite room to go into in the summer because the kids just are enjoying every single second. There's water play. There's lots of enjoyment by the kiddos and it's really a good time. If you're bored in the summer, we have lots that you could come and see. And this year, we had a mental health grant that provided some social and emotional support for students over the course of the summer. And so we had social workers that would, that was, were able to provide social skills instruction for students as well as mental health counseling and/or support. And they were engaged in sessions where kids were building game, I'm sorry, building projects, playing a game. They were engaged with one another because over the course of the summer, you know, the students that you might lose connection with are the ones that need to be connected with the most. And so that allowed us to be able to do that over the course of the summer for students to stay connected with each other as well as staff. I'm going to pass it off to Katie.
Can I ask a question first?
Of course.
Were those, are those IEP students or are those from any population in the schools?
Great question. So the, are you talking about the social and emotional?
The social and emotional learning.
Yep. So those are primarily IEP students. We had a couple of students that, you know, you wanted to maintain connection with over the course of the summer, potentially for just making, making sure all is okay. And so there's about, there is two accounted for in that number.
Hi. So once again, we ran the enrichment program for students to choose to sign up for. This is a, a program that parents pay to send their child. They can do two classes a day. So a class from 8 to 10 and then a class from 10:15 to 12:15. We have tremendous success with our science and art classes. So if it's not broken, I don't fix it. We get those friends in. We change up the offerings during them, but the, the big picture content is the same. So the robotics was offered last summer as well. They changed up what was being done with the robots and everything this year. But the fact that we can bring robots in and have six-year-olds playing with them is pretty cool. So we, we don't really change the big picture topic, but we, we change up the, every day. So we did steam and chemistry. The sculpture class is always a tremendous success. Kids just love clay. You can't get enough of that. You can see our friends in that picture doing their fiber arts where you can wear what you made. We had a lot of sporting venues created in there and putting greens was very popular. Were very popular this year. And I had three student volunteers this year. Two were entering freshmen who got their hours done as entering freshmen. So good for them. And one was actually a middle schooler whose mom was working down in the preschool and she came and helped out some days. So that was just fun for her to come in and hang out in the art room. And then I also work with the credit recovery students, so students who need to finish or retake or complete a class for high school requirements. We had a total of eight participants this year and they were all able to do the work they needed to get done. And especially my understanding and what I've learned through doing this program, because I'm not a high school person, is especially getting those English credits completed because if you don't get them done, it becomes really hard to get them done. So getting those complete were, were important for them. And a lot of them finished, they worked for four weeks and they're in-person during that time, but most are able to finish in under the four weeks. So then they can get back to like work and jobs and whatever else their summer has. So it's kind of a choose your own adventure for them to try and get their work done, but also finish within that four-week timeframe. And then we have our ramp program, which is for students, it's invite-only. And those are students entering grades one through six who receive intervention services at the schools. And so we tend to invite about 10 per grade to come. We ended up with 38 total. So some decline or maybe don't show up. But that's okay. And again, hour of literacy and an hour of math. And it pairs nicely with the enrichment. So oftentimes, they might do their ramp program and then stay for art or ramp and science, or then do art and then go to ramp. So whatever the schedule, their schedule allows. So we had two of our Wells Road teachers leading that and it was successful. And it's a really nice program, I have to say, for our entering third grade because they got to enter Wells Road with a new level of confidence, knowing two of the staff members pretty well. And they were like, hi. They were so excited to see those two people because they got to know them for three weeks over the summer. So just a side perk of that program for us.
No, I'll take the last two slides. So another piece that we are able to do over the summer with our open choice grant funding is we extend an invitation to all of our open choice participants to attend Granby Parks and Recreation Summer Camp for a week because they may not be, not being in physical proximity, they may not have seen their classmates and friends over the course of the summer. So this summer, we had eight middle school students participate in Mission Adventures, which is the daily field trips to Brownstone and the movies and mini-golf with friends. And we had four students participate in the grade one through five camp. And you can see here that students were really excited to participate and spend time with their friends that they hadn't seen in quite a bit of time. And we also have something at the high school called AP Power Boost. So it started about four years ago. We invite students who are taking an AP course for the first time to attend a one-week program to boost their skills that are needed for an AP course. Girls, did either of you attend this program?
My sister did. She's actually in the middle of the picture.
Maybe you can chime in. This year, we had 17 students participate. And it's not content-specific. It's more about what study skills are needed. How do you take notes? And how do you work together collaboratively? What did I miss?
Nothing. You get to be on a panel. I got to experience, I was a volunteer on the panel this year. And you get to hear like firsthand experience from students who took like courses either as a freshman or a sophomore, which is really extremely helpful. Like I can't stress how helpful it is to somebody who was extremely intimidated by a rigorous course like that.
Great. Thank you. So we've seen great success. So we continue that program. This again, is about year four. And just in other words, there's other things happening besides roof replacements and robot building and note-taking. We did lunch and learns with our staff where we brought people in based on when they were available to learn about topics like restorative practices and parent square. There was a lot of summer curriculum updating happening. We had three days of administrative retreat and some leadership meetings along the way. And we always were doing interviewing during the summer. But you can see in the bottom slide, on the top is an example of a lunch and learn. In the bottom is our nine new certified staff that started in district and they were here for new teacher orientation. So that is the end of our presentation on summer programming. I don't know if you have any questions for Jen or Katie or myself, but I just want to highlight that it's a pretty wide range of programming that we offer at very little cost to the operating budget. The majority of the programs are funded through special education funding, through grants that we have, open choice grants, quality and diversity funding that we get. And some of it is the self-help. So the enrichment classes, we need to take in as many students as it costs us to run the program. So very little overall cost to the district.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, actually I do. The AP introductory course, did we have more people interested in the course than actually took the course? Or were you, were we able to accommodate everyone that wanted to take that course?
We were able to accommodate those that were interested and available. We run one session. So I'm sure that doesn't die with everybody's vacation schedule, but students were invited and we didn't have to cap it. So we were able to take all the students that were interested and available.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious. I mean, it sounds like a lot is happening in our schools all summer. And as far as I know, most of our areas don't have air conditioning. So how, how is that in terms of working conditions for staff and for the comfort of the kids?
We do all of our programming, Jen and mine. And this was actually the first summer that all of our summer programming was at Kelly Lane. Most times, most of it's there, but we have a few friends over at the high school. Kelly Lane tends to be the coolest building, airflow-wise. It's very cool. Yeah, just to hang out there. We use every air-conditioned spot available and are very strategic in that. We end our day at noon. So we're out by the hottest part of the day. But there is, having worked at Kelly Lane, there is good airflow there. So for the most part, it's not awful. We do have credit recovery runs at the high school, but they're in the media center. So that's an air-conditioned space. And those are all our major.
Yeah, same with, with Power Boost runs there, credit recovery. And we love hosting in the summer at Central Office. So.
We do a lot of our curriculum work. People come to Central Office for that reason. So we're very strategic about identifying cooler spaces for staff and also timing. Even you may have heard Chris say, he had his staff start earlier in the morning and dismiss earlier than it's a typical workday because of the climate. Gets very uncomfortable.
And it was a hot summer.
It was hot.
Are there any other questions from the board or from our students?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work over the summer. It's immensely appreciated. All right. Next up, Assistant Superintendent Jen Carson with the Asnuntuck program update, which I think most of us heard a little bit about. Yeah.
Yeah, it's great. So you have a full memorandum in your packets, but Granby Public Schools has had a longstanding partnership with Asnuntuck Community College. One of our graduation program requirements is to pursue at least a college-level course or a progression of elective courses in a specific career area. And one of the ways that students have fulfilled this is with that partnership. So in the past, access to the Asnuntuck program has ranged over the topics of mechatronics, machining, and welding. And for more than a decade, our 11th and 12th grade students have been participating. They take classes at the, at Granby Memorial in the morning and then they go over to Asnuntuck in the afternoon, earning six college credits for the year. At the end of last year, we had 18 students express interest. Six would be returning seniors for a second year to the program. And the program cost the district anywhere between 2,000 and 2,800 per student for the year for those six college credits. And then transportation was an additional cost. Unfortunately, this year on August 20th, so just about a week before students started school, we were informed that the high school program at Asnuntuck would not run. So that was a decision on the Asnuntuck side, based on the consolidation of the state's community college system. As the community colleges came together, the administration was centralized. And so they were not able to give us a program cost for And so they were not able to give us a program cost for the program and didn't have time to sort of analyze out that impact. And they were experiencing staffing shortages and would not be able to run all of the programs. So we started looking at alternatives for our students who had an interest in these areas. Under the Director of School Counseling, her team and their guidance, they identified the early college advanced manufacturing pathway at Goodwin University's Riverside Magnet School, otherwise known as E-Camp. So E-Camp is a program that is in place. It is under the Regional School Choice Office, and districts such as East Granby, Suddington, and Vernon already participate. The program is for high school seniors. And over the course of a year, they actually gained 21 college credits as opposed to the six. They accrue industry-recognized credentials and have hands-on training in advanced manufacturing. This year-long program is at a set cost through the RESCO contract of 3,800 per student with transportation included. So it is a pretty net equal swap and allows for predictable budgeting. So we reached out to, once we were able to reach out and found out that the program would be able to accommodate our interested seniors, families were informed of the change. And seniors were brought in and they met with the program director and learned about how this opportunity would actually be an expanded opportunity with increased college credits, paid apprenticeships in the second semester, and industry credentials. They went out and toured the facility at Goodwin University on August 29. And we currently have eight of our students who have committed to pursuing this program. They will start their classes on Monday. Over the course of the year, while we're very happy we were able to find an alternative in such a short period of time, we will closely monitor student progress to determine if this, the success of the program. And we'll also stay in contact with Asnuntuck to determine if they will possibly be returning any of their programming. We're grateful to our students, families, and staff for their flexibility and collaboration in making this quick transition. And a special thank you to Megan Reiner, who's our Director of School Counseling, and her counseling staff, and our partners at RESCO and Goodwin University in making this change happen.
Thank you, and thank you for the quick, quick action. And I know it was a very disappointing decision when that letter came through from Asnuntuck. So I'm, I'm wondering what, what kids aren't getting in this new program? No, we don't, we can't specifically do anything about that right now, but I'm curious as to what was being offered that, that isn't available right now.
Yeah. So I will also just take a moment to highlight and say that the second page of the memorandum has some very specific details on the program that I will not read aloud to you. As I mentioned, over the course of the past 10 years, Asnuntuck has been able to offer three different programs. The mechatronics and the machining are very much part of the E-Camp program. The welding piece is not a part of the E-Camp program, but Asnuntuck has sporadically been able to offer that based on staffing. We will be offering feedback to Goodwin also and letting them know that that is an interest that our students have is that welding piece. But overall, the coursework is a little bit more in-depth, a little bit more rigorous, and was a result in 21 college credits over the six that they were previously gaining.
And then what about the juniors?
So our juniors, there were four juniors who had expressed interest. That was part of the, a little bit of the unpredictability of enrollment as Asnuntuck, is that some students could start junior year, some started senior year. So some students did two years, some did one. And so our current juniors do not have this opportunity at the moment, but they will have an opportunity next year, whether we return to E-Camp or Asnuntuck is able to revive some of the programming. One of the kind of side pieces of this is we're really looking at in the future, what general education requirements do students have to make sure they fulfill so that they're freed up in their afternoons of, of senior year to go to this program? And so students who were interested were really making sure that they have everything in place so that next year, whether it, no matter what program it is, they will have those requirements fulfilled and be able to move in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add a few comments. So we were not the only district impacted by this. The communication that we received just days before school was to open went to East Granby, Southfield, Windsorlarks, and Granby of the four districts. I would like to just pat ourselves on the back. We are the only district that did find alternative avenue for our seniors. I reached out proactively to all superintendents and they just were not able to jump as quickly as we were. I had had a previous relationship with Goodwin. In my previous district, we modeled after this program to build a state-of-the-art STEM facility as a part of my work at Glastonbury High School. We've modeled it after this specific location and curriculum. I spent over a year researching opportunities for students in this career pathway, and it is an exemplary model. Since we've made the commitment, I have spoken to neighboring superintendents. As an example, in East Granby, they had been committed to Asnuntuck, but they also had started branching out to offer E-Camp. And in my recent conversation just a few days ago with the high school principal there, he said all of the feedback that they had been gathering is that this is a superior experience for students. We all identify welding as a true need. And I know from my personal life that this is a real need. And so we intend to work together with neighboring districts to see what we could do to create a pathway for welding, whether it's with Goodwin or there's something called virtual welding that maybe we could even do here in our high school that gives children the tools that they need for a welding career pathway without actually welding. It's actually a very cool experience. It's a virtual 3D welding. And so we're going to look at that. We're going to talk with our neighboring districts. That might be something that comes up again during budget time, if it's something that we can offer. But I also want to mention that Nikki Stevenson played a critical role in the analysis from a fiscal responsibility. And truly, we, we believe and we know to be true that our students are getting more for the dollars. And because the transportation is included, it's actually a benefit to the district. We also had really the pleasure of having all of the students that are engaging needed to come to Central Office over the last couple of days to be able to expedite their paperwork. Today, I spoke to three different families, just saying hello as they came in to have their paperwork signed. And they're really excited. They're really excited and their children are feeling excited. And you know, having a senior myself, this is a scary time, that fall of senior year as that runway amps up. And so I'm really proud of the work that we've been able to do to provide this as an alternative option. So thank you.
That's great. Additional questions from the board?
Well, I'm, I can say I'm super excited about this. I used to work at Connecticut River Academy at Goodwin. And so our students got in the habit of taking classes over there. And then some kids did a more academic track where they were taking college English, and then some kids were doing the manufacturing. So Goodwin has a history of working with those high school students. And I think it's a federalist option.
Actually, I have a question. So I understand the cost is around 3,800. Is there any cost that is passed on to the student or the families? Or is that a cost that we are, the, the school board is covering?
That is a cost that comes to the school district. It's negotiated contract rate, Nikki, you can talk to it additionally, through the Regional School Choice Office or RESCO. So just like we would pay tuition for a magnet student, we are paying the tuition for these students to participate in the.
So there's no increased cost to the family? That's what I was.
The family, no.
So it's the same as like a Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts, the same as a family that resides in Granby but never steps foot in our school and attends a magnet. Essentially, we're paying that cost, so they get that same benefit.
And Goodwin is much more aligned to the school calendar.
Right.
As opposed to a college calendar, so there'll be less downtime for students. For example, when there was a college break, students wouldn't have an afternoon program to attend. So with Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts, with Goodwin, because they're both working within that system, it's a much closerly, much more closely aligned calendar.
Okay, there's a lot of positives here out of a situation that was a little scary at first.
And then eight days too. That's miraculous.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional questions there? All right, moving on to business requiring action. In regard to the minutes from the June 4, 2025 meeting, do I have a motion?
I move that the Granby Board of Education approve the minutes of the June 4, 2025 Board of Education meeting.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
All abstained.
Yeah, I think, Anne, you have to abstain as well. So we have two abstentions.
Who seconded?
Heather.
Heather, okay.
Okay, thank you all. Next up, a discussion on CPAC. Superintendent Burke?
Great. So I'm just going to get us started, but we have our resident expert here, Mr. Krista Gray. So the Board of Ed has now seen the items on our capital priority improvement list a number of times. Over a year ago, we started with our original list, and the Board did approve the entirety of that list. Time has, has passed. And at the end of last academic year, I believe it was the May 21 meeting, we identified for you from that original list, what are our priorities. And you'll see those outlined on the memo in the packet, and Chris will speak to you in just a moment. Today, what we're here to do is say we're maintaining these priorities. However, one has been crossed off the list this summer. We were able to replace the roof at Central Office. So of course, we've replaced it with another priority, which Chris will speak to. And our, and our goal today is to have you approve this list in order to be in alignment with the town of Granby. We have now merged the municipality list and the school board list into one. We have a shared format. And this was done in concert over the summer, another item that was squeezed in. Krista Gray and Dale Kittleson met alongside Town Manager Mike Walsh to populate the list in the same fashion as the town had done. And the intention here is that we approve this list and it goes to CPAC and you all convene and take action on the list this, this year. So we're eager for that to happen and excited for that to happen. And we are continuing to work towards these goals. And so we're asking for you to give a little attention to Chris so he can bring us up to speed on what's those continued priorities. And there's been a few adjustments to the.
Yes, yes. So I, I look at this as more of a hitting the refresh button on your computer. We didn't, we didn't change the bones of what this document looked like. However, I'm a strong believer in collaboration and using the tools in your toolbox. In discussion with my staff, they had not necessarily been included as much in the creation of prior lists in regards to really like the mechanical, the electrical plumbing, the shape of things. So I spent two days with Dale. We spent a half day in each of the four schools with the list going through. And it was, why is this 10 years? This should only, this should happen in year two. And why is this in year two that was replacing? So it was kind of shifting it to be more in alignment of what it needed and also, you know, cost change in construction facilities, mechanicals from year to year. And there certainly have been some shifts. The tariffs have affected some of that, just speaking to our various vendors. And then we try and project out. So what we did is we really came up with a clean list that had input from myself and my experience, from my staff and the people who have worked the buildings. And then we also had the benefit of the facilities condition assessment that occurred at the middle school that I'll talk about briefly in a moment. So we have this list. We put it together. We reviewed it internally. And then Dale and I set aside an entire day to meet with the town manager, make sure it was kind of, we went line by line, had some discussions about where things belonged on the list and really made sure that it looked like what the rest of the CPAC list is going to look like in our best estimates. And I think we were able to dive in a little bit more in, in the middle school because of the facilities condition assessment. I think that, that portion that says if we don't do this, this is what we have to fix here. We have not concrete fingers, figures, but we have a better idea based on that. That being said, it was, that entire facilities conditions assessment was a visual inspection. And I, I want to impress some people that sometimes they'll look at the repair it right now and get us by figure, which I think was 3.1 million in cost value replacement, which was about 20 million. Engineers' words, not mine, that, that 3.2 million is to keep the lights on and keep water out of the building. There's a lot of design fees. You open walls, you don't know what you're going to find. It didn't include adding sprinklers to the whole thing. So there's a lot of things. It's a, it's for much larger conversation down the road. But I just wanted to, to make sure that that was clear. Safety and security, I've been working with some vendors to prioritize some upgrades that we need from door alarms to hardwiring alarm systems and a whole bunch of things we're constantly talking about and in communication with the police department about and then our different vendors because safety and security is, is paramount to all of us. The turf and track field replacement, we're, we're still on track, I believe, within those figures. And again, we'll have more information as this company puts their information together. Long-term, the if and when it happens, they kind of said, in a model where the athletic season ends near November and they can get in at least start some work, that's huge work that they wouldn't have to do in the spring. And in that model, they would work until they couldn't anymore. And they think, under that model, any vendor should be able to have it ready by like a commencement. If it times out whenever it's done, then it doesn't start till spring. They said you can most assuredly count on losing both sports seasons, spring and fall, because it will run from March until almost November. So I know there's a lot of things in play with how that's going to be funded when it happens. But they, they said, call anybody else on top of the fact that most of them book two to three years out, especially if you're doing whole fields. So I'll certainly provide the most current and up-to-date information. And I did ask them for updated quotes on the excavation part portion before CPAC meets again, so at least we can have somewhat of a better idea.
If I, can I interrupt you just for a second here?
Yes.
Just because I, in, in dropping my kids off at the, or one of my kids off at the middle school, I noticed and somebody did flag it for me as well, that there's a substantially larger portion of the track now cut off, that it's getting worse fairly rapidly. Is that accurate or?
It's, it's appearing elsewhere. Right now, it is not appearing on the turf field, but I have noticed differences. So, so what happened was, we noticed, we had cones out there and people were kind of moving them and it became a safety issue. Didn't want to shut down the track. So we put snow fence. We had to actually hit down metal into the ground for that whole area. But as you stand there in other areas further down, since I started, I remember looking at when I started, we're starting to see depressions in other areas. And, and that's what their findings were, is that there's potential for depressions and cavities in most of the 30 spots. But almost all of them, they said, if you go down about five feet, you'll be okay. Which, which again, it's a whole different set of procedure and process and equipment when you have to go down five feet as opposed to having to go down 12, 15 feet. They still recommend that area because it is showing items in the ground, wood, brick, things like that. That area will have to be excavated, but the rest of it will, will be much shorter and it'll be, I mean, a significant cost savings as opposed to having to go down 12, 15 feet, the entire track and, and from a time-wise and labor standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that, that's great. Like, I'm very happy to hear that we are optimistic about that. It's just that the problem's not going to get better. This is just going to keep.
It's rapidly getting it worse. And we are up against the clock because as it gets worse, we also need a longer timeframe to plan and, and, you know, prepare and do the work. And we're, I also heard you say to me before, and you said it correctly tonight, that these, there is very finite number of companies that can do this work and they book years out. So this must be a top priority when we do have the opportunity to speak at the CPAC. Just because we need to do it now in order to see that, not lose use of the field in its entirety, because that would be catastrophic for our students.
My sports team is able to use it this fall?
Yes. Yes, yes. Right now, it's really kind of on the outside perimeter where the track meets the green turf, but it's slowly depressing around.
And after the winter, we anticipate the spring sports. We don't know yet.
Right, because I started here in October, and the spring when it was gone, and I was getting ready for, that made me say we need to test more, was it was in this area here, and now we have a bunch down there. And their, their big issue from a cost standpoint is right now, they believe we can go down about that five feet. You got to know that we have a ton of utilities, and the time it's going to take to expose and dig around those utilities and drainage, and you'll have to put it new, is going to significantly change the costs of this project. Any more questions on the track?
Thank you.
We've been talking about the track since we've been here, right?
And then district facility storage. I have pictures of our bay over at Pierce. We were in a position to be able to order all of our janitorial supplies for the year, but it's in excess of 90 pallets. So we have them stuffed everywhere, and some vehicles parked outside, and hidden in boiler rooms, and wherever we can put them where they're safe, and there's not any prior restriction issues and things like that. We certainly could use it. And then, over the course of this summer, we found some tears in the epoxy flooring in Wells Road. We actually had a section about this big crumble that just fell apart, and we have some seams and things. And when it was taken apart, we brought a vendor out to repair to look at it. Not only does it need an upgrade because of the tears, but it's, those kids over there running and falling, it's almost like falling on concrete, because we actually measured, and the current floor is as thick as three credit cards. So a moisture barrier, and it all has to be poured all at once, the whole epoxy system, the tire process. And the, off the back top of their head quote was about $150,000. So they did make some remedial repairs very inexpensively, and found some areas to prevent tearing. But over time, they're just going to show up and shrink with the weather and humidity and things like that, cold weather, and we expect we'll have more.
Chris, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you are usually able to recall facts about how old is that floor? Do you remember?
To me, it looks in excess of 20 years old.
When we talked about that.
Easily young. And the rest of the list, like I said, it was just moving some things around. A lot of the information we were able to get from the facilities condition assessment for the middle school, as well as add a bunch of cost analysis that they were able to provide for that building.
Thank you. And so I'll just add, you know, your approval is truly just to move this list forward to the next board, which is the CPAC board, which does include representation from the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen has already approved the municipality list in the same format with identified priorities. If you approve this moving forward this evening, then the next step is to convene CPAC. I know that David and Heather are members of that group. I think we may need to appoint a third person, Monica, down the line.
I think it was just us.
It was just the two. Oh, it wasn't three. I apologize.
Yeah, no, no, just two.
Two people from each of the three boards.
Right, and then I reversed my numbers, right.
Then you and I are there, and Chris as well.
I mean, the biggest differences that I see in these from the last time we went through is it's a lot more specific.
Yeah.
So, I mean, before, there were, there were lower numbers, because we had no idea, we had no estimate. Here, we've had a lot more opportunity. And when it was first presented, you weren't even here yet, Chris. We had a different facilities director who presented us with the list. So I'm happy to see there's more detail to it. I think we'll really still have to, you know, break down a variety of different things, especially in regards to the middle school. The middle school is really the big X factor.
Yes.
We're going to have to figure out how, what and how we want to do, what we want to do at the middle school.
Because things will happen. Just the other day, we had an issue with the air conditioning in the music room, and found out the compressor is part of a two-part compressor, so we have to replace both to replace one. And, you know, that will happen over time as we move forward.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions in regard to the CPAC list?
I have a quick question. When does that TBD for number three change to a number?
On the first page?
Yeah.
The middle school?
Yeah.
Chris, want to talk about that a little bit more? Just, we don't have a specific number for the middle school project, because there are a number of decisions that have to be made. We haven't engaged yet with an architect, or done any comprehensive study. But you can speak to the challenge of putting a number there.
Sure. So we had a full facilities condition assessment. A whole team of engineers come out for a couple of days, and they looked at the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, the fire, the life safety, the finishes. And their job wasn't too kind of appraised, and it's, the way I've described this in easy to understand terms, is you get in an accident, and you call an appraiser, and he says, this is how much it's going to cost to fix. But once it gets to the shop, and they start pulling back and look at brakes and metal under, oh, we found this, we found this, we found this. That happens with buildings too. So they can only go on this visual inspection, these, these seven to 10 engineers came to look at. Now, you know, you can't see through walls, you can't look at ceilings under floors, at the conditions of pipes and electrical and things like that. So they just go by their expertise, their knowledge, and they make notation of things. So I think in this 70-page report, they said cost replacement revalue is, value is 20 million. It doesn't mean we can build a new middle school for 20 million. That's just a general cost replacement. They said immediate repairs in the next couple of years is like 3.1, 3.2 million. But as I said before, big thing is it includes no modernization. It's called replacing in kind. If it's a carpet, they're going to come in and find the closest to this type of carpet. Now, we want to do wood floor, we want to sprinkler the whole building, enhance life safety, things like that. So it's kind of just a starting point for conversation. Also, it doesn't include any design fees. And then to just slightly break it out bigger, if the decision is made at some point, okay, let's do it in phases, four phases, and these are the four things we're going to do for each of those phases. It's a completely different set of design and architectural fees, as opposed to if you say, let's do it all at once, you have one firm do everything, you're basically starting over every time. But I, the way I explain it to people is, you know, the appraisal on your truck comes in at 10,000, and it gets to the body shop, and they're like, oh, no, we found this, and this, and this. The frame spent is going to be 25,000. It's really, next steps, next steps is kind of market studies, engaging with architects to really look at renovation versus new, and just be able to provide all the facts and figures and options. And as I said, the engineer said that 3.2 million, no modernization, no design fees, that keeps the lights on and water out of the building.
So I guess to Jessica's point, I mean, or, CPAC's going to need more than the TBD in order to make any sort of determination going forward. So what's the best way for the, and I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm thinking out loud or asking you all a question here, but what's the best way for the board to go forward to get a more definite number and decide what the best approach is? Because if we're going to spend 3.2 million dollars to just keep the lights on, that's not enough to serve our students and community in the long run. Is that a safe statement to make? So how do we find the best path forward with this information? Where do we go from here? How do we get the answers to what we need?
For projects this scale, Chris or I, or frankly, even this board, doesn't have the level of expertise that's necessary.
Of course.
And so we will very frankly need some dollars in order to engage those experts in a comprehensive study, where they will then provide us with, you know, option A, option B, option C, because there's state level reimbursement when we do certain amounts of work. We'd also want to look at projections for enrollment and growth in the community. You know, there's a number of layers of expertise that we would need. So if the Board of Education, and then supported by the CPAC board, agree that the middle school is in need of a renovation or a build to new, because those are, there's a linear process that we can determine, then we would form a committee specifically for the middle school project, like you all have done previously. Mike Walsh and I have had a number of conversations. He has extensive experience in the different types of financial reimbursements and ways that we can go about that to make it viable. My understanding is that would be a primary role of the CPAC group in order to support us. I also think that we always want to be, you know, visionary, yet fiscally responsible. And so we'd need more data points about the future of, you know, Granby School District. And so I think our first ask, as superintendent, I would say, we will need to identify an amount of money that would allow us to engage in the appropriate study, which would include more than the visual inspection. The visual inspection was a very important first step, because we did not have anything that we could point to to say, here's the age of, you know, the mechanicals in the kitchen, as an example. I know that we have some ancillary equipment that we're plugging in, because the existing equipment is no longer working. This is true in almost every part of the middle school. So there are components of the middle school's building, as they were intended to be used, that are completely offline because of the age, but we've been able to piece together, you know, some solutions. We are at the end of our ability to do that. So it is definitely time, and in fact, we're probably a little past the time where this conversation really needs to amp up to that next level. So in the coming school year, I'd very much like to be able to have the resources necessary to engage in a full review, including some architectural decision making that would allow us to know what those options are. The other components that I've experienced in other building projects is we also have to consider, we are an operational school, and so we have students that need to learn throughout this process. So you also have to consider even for phasing, are we teaching out of, you know, another location? Are we using portable classrooms? What's the effect on fields? And, you know, bigger than.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's definitely a lot.
But I think it's a worthy conversation that we've started, and we need direction from CPAC so that we can have the resources that we need to continue along.
So we're identifying it as a priority and advising that we need funds in order to explore how deep this goes.
Right. And to piggyback off what Sheri said, and Nikki's been a great resource with a lot of her experience. What I was told when I spoke to the FCA people is, really what you want to do is start working your way towards a sustainability study and market research study, so that they can see the needs of the school, the students, look at the population, things like that. I did reach out to Correct, because they have a division that takes care of that, it no longer operates, they just got back to me recently. But they did give me several names of firms to at least reach out and kind of just put some feelers out for what that might look like. And it would be probably an architectural firm. And don't think, oh, they're going to build us a new school. They're going to tell you all your options, and really give you down the road solid figures of what you need to do renovate or new book. I think it's a point where we pass it on to, like Sheri said, the next level of professionals.
Can I just follow up on something you said, Sheri? Where are we, and this might be an action item, but where are we with regard to enrollment, the projected enrollment, what it was supposed to be for this year, and where did we land?
Let's bring that back next meetings. I don't want to misrepresent.
Yes, no, that's, it would be an action item, but I think it's interesting to see, you know, are we seeing growth? Are we still trying to see some shrinkage?
Yeah, I'm happy to share that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Can I ask another question? I'm sorry. Like, I know we're already approaching 8:30. The Board of Education building roof replacement at number four for our priorities? Didn't we just do that?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry, missed that.
Yeah, they said they wanted to slot in the Wells floor, gym floor.
Gym floor, got it.
I wanted to leave it.
Sorry, sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you so much, Chris. Okay.
So we need a motion?
Additional questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Granby Board of Education approved the attached revised Board of Education 10-year capital plan and priorities as follows. District safety and security program, GMHS turf track and field replacement, Granby Memorial Middle School renovation, Wells Road Gymnasium floor, and district facility storage.
I second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. The motion carries. And thank you so much, Chris. I know there was a lot of information. I really appreciate the details. Nikki Stevenson, our Director of Finance and Operations report?
All right. Before you is the attached FY25 year-end budget expense report reflecting transactions through June 30th, 2025. This year, the Board of Education achieved notable savings primarily within the special education accounts, resulting in an unexpended fund balance of 941 to 66. Per prior agreements with the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, $650,000 of these savings will be allocated toward BOE small capital projects, which include the central office roof replacement, which is now complete at nearly 50% of the original 100,000 estimate, the high school main gym bleachers, and the safety and security initiatives. Of the remaining 291 to 66 in savings, administration is recommending that 130,000 be deposited into the non-lapsing education fund, with the remaining 161 to 66.81 returned to the town. The quality and diversity fund closed the year with a balance of 211, 803, positioning us well for the new fiscal year. In FY25, reimbursements to the town totaled 2,338,226, which was approximately $155,000 less than budgeted. So all in all, we ended the year in a really good position. Any questions?
Any questions for anyone?
The 130,000 that is going to be deposited into the non-lapsing education fund, I just wanted to make sure I know the agreement was that anytime we made a deposit into the non-lapsing fund, it was subject to the approval of the other boards?
No, it was only the Board of Education.
It's only the Board of Education, but it was discussed.
Okay. Just want to clarify that it was discussed and.
Absolutely. So we already shared this with the Board of Finance, because they did meet over the summer, and we did not. So they are privy to these numbers. This fund is new to us, so I'm glad you're asking the question. Nikki's going to correct me if I misrepresent. However, this is solely a Board of Education fund. Because of our longstanding relationship with the Board of Finance, we have committed to return to the town, as well as put money aside in our fund earmarked for special education and district improvements when they're needed. This board must vote, we cannot do it without your approval, to move that identified balance into the fund. And then we report it to the other board, the Board of Finance. We don't report to the Board of Selectmen, only the Board of Finance. And they were able to ask questions, and we worked closely with Chairperson Burko to determine.
And we presented this at the July meeting, didn't we?
Correct.
Didn't we? And then we resubmitted to them for the most recent.
So they will get this report. And the bottom line only changed about $4,000 from when I reported in July.
To the benefit.
To the benefit. So we're giving back additional about $4,000.
Okay.
Thank you. And then the other thing is, because I see people say things on social media, I understand that the $650,000, the money was transferred to do the repairs with the roof, the high school main bleachers, safety and security initiatives. These are things that we needed to expend money on. These were not things that we just decided, oh, we have this extra money. And that this was stuff that we, I know that we did work with the Board of Finance in approving this. And just to clarify that these were items that needed, you know, just like you have your house, right? Things go break, or things go wrong, and you have to fix them. And sometimes, you're not lucky enough to have that additional funds.
Thank you for saying that. And I'll even take it a step farther, if I may. These were identified needs over the last two budget cycles that we were not fully able to fulfill due to other priorities at the time. So safety and security has been something we're, I'll use the term, chipping away at over the last couple of years. And in working with the Board of Finance, when we learned through some renegotiation of our transportation contracts, and by returning a couple of students in district for special education services, we swung the other to our favor this past year. And so with that, these monies are going to the town, and they're going to the small capital fund on the town side, and they will be allocated for Board of Education projects. So this money is not being kept at the Board of Ed to spend. This is going into the designated small capital fund. In concert with the Board of Finance last spring, when we started to see that we were seeing a surplus because of these renegotiated contracts and returning of special education students, we identified that this would be an opportunity to earmark those funds for these needs that you just identified, Donna. And I'm so grateful. We are so grateful that we were able to do this, because it really benefits all of us, because we don't have to go into the FY26 budget season asking for these funds to complete the project. And likewise, when CPAC convenes, we already have some identified monies through small cap that we can use for these identified priorities, and then we're better able to use the dollars through CPAC. use the dollars through CPAC for the much larger projects like the turf field and the middle school.
And I thought, the bleachers were anticipated to be in.
Yeah, we ordered them, they're just delayed a bit. Is it October?
I think they're going to be October.
Yes, I mean, sometime early this year.
Middle of October.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
You know, I definitely support all these projects, but this is year six on the board for me and maybe, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but how do we miss by almost a million dollars? Like, I, I think that, you know, when we go through this tortuous budget process, right? Where we're eliminating languages from the middle school, we don't have $20,000 for a part-time groundskeeper and all these other little micro cuts. And then at the end of the day, we have $900,000 left over. Like, I'm, I'm having trouble reconciling, like, how do we go through that process to end up with this result?
I mean, I think that process ended up with this result because we, you know, we had a forward-thinking superintendent who was developing in-house programs that were ultimately successful. I think it's kind of hard to estimate whether a program's going to end up being appropriate to the level where you can bring a student back from out of the district, back into the district. So it's kind of an intentional but unanticipated savings, it's an opportunity. So, and if I'm misrepresenting, please correct me, but to me, that was the, the purpose of developing these programs is to see if we can be successful and bringing them back in-house. And then going forward, I think the goal is to try to expand those programs so we'll have a better idea of what we're capable of doing. Here, this, to me, last year was a test case on what can we do and please.
From the special education component, thank you for the compliment and yes, I believe that that is true. We had developed some infrastructure, but we could not identify Sherri Burke is going to be able to come back from that outplacement at a cost saving of the $300,000. We had, depending on how you look at it, we had students move out of town. We had two Nikki?
Yeah, two or three.
Very substantially financially heavy special education students who left our community. We could not have foreseen that, that contributed to that. And Ms. Stevens was hired brand new and after the budget had been negotiated, you know, the previous budget under our direction, we had a transportation contract that frankly we were overpaying. It was almost half a million dollars that was saved and we reported that a number of times to the board just on renegotiating our transportation contract. Well, you must know the number.
Yeah, so it was a little, just for the transportation, it was around $300,000. So there's 300.
In the one year.
In the one year.
And then in the.
And then when you have those high cost outplacements, whether they come back in district or they move out of district, that adds up quickly in tuition. Also, we had staff that we couldn't hire, so there's salaries and wages that we're not spending. And, and when you get into certified staff, those numbers can also add up quickly. So when we're budgeting almost a year out, sometimes we have to budget what we know at the time. And as we all know, things can shift very quickly within a couple of days.
Both ways, yeah, either way.
So this, you know, this current fiscal year, things are, are fine now, but things can shift quickly. So it can be in our favor or it can go the other direction. So we kind of have to take this year as a win. I know sometimes people can look at it negatively and think that maybe we budgeted incorrectly, but that's not necessarily the case.
And what is the average tuition for out-of-district placements, just for those who don't deal with those numbers every day?
Each placement is a little bit different, but I know when we, when we start talking about the excess cost, you know, when we start getting the excess cost grant, it has to be four and a half times our per pupil expenditure and that's $92,000.
$92,000, but we have students in excess of $200,000 for one child. And, you know, we're a small community, I can't speak as you know about individuals, but when you have a family move in with a high needs child, that could swing us in the other direction between 92 and 200, 250,000. Likewise, when a family moves out of district, that follows them to their next community. So it's, I know it's, it's wild to think about, but it truly can swing by a quarter of a million dollars for one student coupled with $390,000 in transportation savings, you know? And please know, we baked that into the FY26 budget. So the savings in transportation we accounted for in the coming budget. If we know it, we account for it instantly. Frankly, when we know it, we account for it immediately if there's a need. That's why we were able to do some of the things that you've just heard us, you know, speak to because when things move in the right direction, one of the first calls I make is to Mr. Gorko and we talk about where we are with small cap and where we are with our projects list because we wanted to be forward-thinking with that. We desperately wanted to hire some of those positions and I remember it well, had we had that crystal ball to know that that would have been the case, I'm right there with you, I would have loved some extra grounds and facilities and I would have loved to have kept some programming. That's what makes this process so challenging, but I can confidently say that we are not over budgeting and we're not under budgeting. We're doing our very best to give you the accurate information at the time, but it does change.
And the other aspect is, once you hire new people, that's a new FTE, that while you may have the extra money this year, that then has to be accounted for each year going forward.
Correct. Yep.
Correct.
Do we have any additional questions?
Yeah, I just, I think all those details are really important and I think, you know, it's hard, it's hard to, to know how that budgeting works and I sit in those PPT meetings every day and on any given day, you could add that $200,000 expense or bring that student back or the student could move away or move into a district and, and I, I think it's hard for folks who are from like a business field to understand how unpredictable those individual pieces are and that that's a little kid in our district and that we have to fund what they need, you know, at that moment. And we are very committed to thinking outside the box and training our staff and, today, I was exchanging emails with the town manager about potential resources to be able to grow our programming. So we're always looking ahead at ways to bring students to their home district if we can. That's not true for all kids, but if we can, we, we want to do that because it's good for kids and because it's a better bottom line for our budget.
Thank you for all the great questions. Is there a motion in regard to the June, June or August?
It's June.
June, okay, June 2025 Budget Expense Report. Can I have a motion, please?
So are we doing two separate motions? One to approve the report and then a motion for the non-lapsing fund?
That's correct.
Okay. So I move that the Board of Education approve the expense memo for June 2025?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Was that Liz?
That was Ann or, was Liz?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Donna and Liz.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Next up, we have a motion in regard to the non-lapsing education fund.
I move that the Granby Board of Education approve the.
The non-lapsing.
Approve the non-lapsing education fund.
Is there a second? Thank you, Liz. Any further discussion?
Deposit into, I think that's why I was struggling a little bit with the language. I think it should be the deposit or the transfer of funds.
The transfer.
I think more accurately, it should be, I move that the Granby Board of Education approve the transfer of funds into the non-lapsing education fund.
Okay.
That's where I got caught up.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, the motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the, the MOU for the School Resource Officer. This is something that we worked on over the summer. We finally have a final copy, which I believe has a tweak, which Superintendent Gork is going to. This was just approved by the Board of Selectmen last night, so there was one little tweak on the SRO, MOU, which is in your packet, I believe.
Okay, so just to orient you to the two documents that are in your packet, we have a memorandum of agreement between the Granby Police Department and the Granby Public Schools. Our governing bodies are the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. So both of those boards will support this MOU or MOA, I suppose, in this regard. And then Chief Sansom and I will meet to sign and implement the agreements that you have in front of you. The first is a document that identifies overall the goals and objectives, you know, of the program and we worked very closely. Chief Sansom took the lead in this. He has had many years' experience as a chief of police in Hartford and East Hartford. He sat on state-level boards with the initial development of School Resource Officer programs. We're really grateful for his area of expertise. We did also work across the leadership team to round out sort of the memorandum so that it was beneficial to both groups while adhering to some very specific state statute and requirements. So much of the language that you see around, you know, the employment and the law enforcement intervention guides, certainly a number of things around reporting and data collection, those are statute necessities to make sure frankly, that we're doing it right, that we're making sure that discipline is still discipline and the responsibility of our school administrators and teachers and that law enforcement is engaging when in fact it's necessary for law enforcement to engage. As Monica shared and as we presented to the Board a couple of times last school year, our overarching goals are really to establish strong relationships, to prevent crime and to ensure that our students have another trusted adult and mentor in the space. And then certainly when we're conducting safety drills and when we are experiencing any potential harm or threats, we have an individual that's working within our school district already knows student staff and families and can support us immediately. So you have a memorandum of agreement that speaks to the legality of our commitment. And then secondly, you have a Granby Police Department and Granby Public Schools graduated response agreement. This is really a working document to provide very clear articulation of the rules. Chief Sansom and I plan to use this to speak with our leadership team. We also plan to meet with all of our schools and present at school staff meetings in the coming months to present this as an exemplary model. And then we're going to gather input across the year. Chief Sansom and I were speaking this morning about setting up reoccurring meetings where we can calibrate, make sure that the program, as he had said to us last year, is, you know, being done in the Granby way because we really want to make sure that it works for our students. So we're asking for your support for the memorandum of agreement and the graduate, graduated response by a vote this evening. I do want to point out that there is one slight change that I was unable to provide to you in writing on the very first page of the memorandum of agreement. Under section four, cost of the School Resource Officer Program, the Board of Selectmen asked that one addition be made. It is at the latter part of the first paragraph where it says, "The total cost of all training, uniform supplies, and other matters specifically and solely related to the officer's duties as an SRO in accordance with the collectively bargained agreement." In the collective bargaining agreement, officers are to be provided with certain resources to be able to do their jobs. This does not change the intent or the meaning of the, of the program. It's really just a clarification and it was implied. And my understanding is that the Board of Selectmen asked for that phrase to be added. I will certainly provide you with a final copy tomorrow via email if you do uphold the agreement.
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I, I remember at one point, we talked about some version of cost sharing between us and the Board of Selectmen for some of the benefits or, or some of the costs. So it looks like right now, all that is provided on the town side is the car.
Well, I mean, they, they take care of anything that the police officer is required to have as a police officer essentially, that would include the car. There is no additional cost savings for the Board of Education here in regard to benefits, wages, anything else. You are right.
Yeah, so, and that's where I think some of this language around what they need to provide their duties, badge, uniform, car, radio, weapon.
Weapon, like, we're not going to be paying for.
Those types of things.
Right.
But we are paying the uniform.
No.
Yes.
Well, I mean, the uniform, if it's related, like, we're not paying for the police uniform, but if there's any additional, anything that's related to his job as the SRO specifically versus an officer. So if like, there's any specific, I can't, I don't even know if there's a, I don't think there is a specific uniform.
We gave all of our staff a Granby.
T-shirt.
T-shirt. We would provide one to the SRO if he wishes to wear that on Fridays when our staff engage in that. But for the most part, I don't think the uniform's a great example. One of the examples, Monica, that we discussed was around training.
Yeah.
SROs are required to have additional training that is in alignment with their duties as a police officer and those trainings would be the responsibility of the police department. And in fact, Officer Dufrain already has engaged in those trainings at the cost of the police department. Likewise, we have a number of trainings that our staff need to engage in, like, which the SRO would be a part of and those costs would be a part of the overall school district's costs for training. We wouldn't bill the police department for his individual participation. Likewise, they would bill us for his participation in something that is in alignment with police officer duties. So the majority of the cost is certainly on the Board of Education side as we discussed during budget season. However, things that are specific to his role of police officer are covered as they would be for any other patrol officer in the police department.
So the purpose of including this chart and this document is to basically say, I'm reading it, police officers are going to get involved in these more serious things on the right side.
Correct.
Like not on the stuff on the left.
Yeah, and we had a lot of conversation about this document here. David is referring to the graduate response model. This is a best practice in other districts where there's really a lot of clarity and transparency around the types of things that are appropriate and are not appropriate for a police officer to engage with. So, you know, let's just say perhaps I'm a middle school teacher or I'm a substitute teacher, let's say, even better, right? And the class is getting a little loud or unruly and Officer Dufrain walks by and I, as the teacher, say, "Officer, can you come in here and talk to these kids? Can you scare them a little? They're not being good listeners." That would be highly inappropriate. That would be something that we would not want, I'm giving a silly example, that we wouldn't want an officer of the law, of the police, to come in and engage with. That is solely the responsibility of the teacher, their assistant principal, a dean, a coach, you know? But if there was potential for a weapon in that environment, if there was a threat made, then of course Officer Dufrain or another officer would engage because that's much more serious infraction. A lot of this comes from concern around over criminalization of behaviors in schools. We talked about this last year. We are very sensitive to the fact that, you know, children could be disproportionately, you know, reprimanded by law enforcement if you have the presence of police in your school and we want to be really careful to ensure that rules and procedures in the school are as they've always been. And then we have this added layer of resources when there's potential for the law to be broke, not potential, when the law is broken or when there is a crime. Because as you know, there are times that we do call the police now to assist us. So in this, we consider this to be a working document that we will evolve over time as we have more concrete examples of our own experience.
Do you have any additional questions?
All right, can I get a motion in regard to the SRO and it is technically an MOA?
MOA, right.
Yeah, there's a few places.
That's okay.
There's MOU, I'll catch them, I noticed that just now.
I move that the Granby Board of Education approve the SRO MOA and the graduated response agreement with the Granby Police Department as amended as discussed this evening.
Perfect. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Heather. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you guys, we're getting close to the end. This is a long one, I'm sorry.
It feels long.
It's been all summer, so here we go.
It is long.
This is long. This is long. This is long. Okay. With no pressure there, Superintendent.
No, I really have very little to share that we haven't already discussed.
We're back, okay.
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Sorry. Let me just take a moment. We had an awesome start of the year, you've heard about that already, but it's true. We've had a great launch of Parent Square, and I'm excited that we will be providing in-person assistance at all of our curriculum nights in open houses if parents haven't yet downloaded the app and want to get that right on their phone. We're going to have staff, you know, at the schools ready to do that. Those dates and times are on our website, so I won't spend time sharing those now. All of our positions are filled. I believe we're looking for one special education teacher still as we continue to grow our programs. There are no students without their coverage, so to speak. However, we know that there are a few children that are about to be identified and some growing needs, so we have that out there. And the Bears Academy is so awesome. I spent time over there, we've doubled in size at the YMCA, and I really want to just give a shout-out of gratitude to Brian Less, who's the director at the Y, and his entire staff. It is such a welcoming environment. We have twelve children there now?
Oh, wow.
We have twelve children, Bears Academy children, as well as a little pilot program that I'll talk with you about in another time. So we're really working on meeting kids where they are, and it's just a beautiful space, and I wanted to share that with you. We are working on sharing some more photos and stories from Bears. I received an email from two of our Bears Academy students today because I'm having them do some tasks. They've already completed all of our tasks, and they're looking for more work to do. So it's really a wonderful program, I'm so proud of it. So I just wanted to share that and thank our teachers and our staff that are over there, they're doing good work.
And just to sign out, Kathleen Walsh, who's the teacher over there, she was really excited to invite the Board of Education to come visit sometimes.
Let me know.
Anytime that we can.
Let me know if you can, if you have, I know you're all busy working during the day, but if you ever have the opportunity, it's truly a wonderful place to visit. And soon they won't be there all that much either because they're out doing their jobs and internships, but it's a really great program, and it's something to be proud of.
Are all twelve students Granby residents, or are any?
We have one out of district currently, so we have ten in district, one out of district, and then we have an additional student who's joining us for some different purposes. But we've been able to engage this particular student in the same setting to meet his needs, and it's looking pretty good so far.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent Burke. Almost last up, board standing committee reports. Finance will meet in two weeks from today. Curriculum, policy, technology, communication did meet tonight, and we have a new chairperson, Liz Barlow, going to give us an update from that tonight.
We get to hear a lot about summer work that was done, so the administrative retreat, there was a welcome event in Hartford for our choice families that was highly attended, which sounds great. I love that we brought Granby folks to Hartford to meet those families where they were at. There was a lot of discussion about assessments and some previews of the SAT and ASVAC data that were going to come to the rest of us eventually. So we had a lot of great kind of questions and discussion about what we are doing right now to try to maintain the scores that are great and to improve the ones that are not. So, good stuff happening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Liz or Jen Parsons?
Okay. I want to congratulate everyone for surviving the first meeting of the year.
It was a long one.
We'll be back in two weeks, it was a long one. Do I have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries, means adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.[1744.11]